I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good evening and thanks to everybody that's here tonight. I appreciate you guys being here and we are going to stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda, we have the NFHS network and contract proposal. And I would just like to speak briefly on behalf of the board. On behalf of the board, we would like to say that we do not feel like we have been misinformed about the NFHS contract. While Mr. Wallingford had the opportunity on his radio show Tuesday night to share the timeline of events, we would like to add a few vital points that we feel that were left out. First meeting was held in July, which was a face-to-face meeting. In that meeting was Austin Moore, athletic director, Ruth Hughes, athletic director for the high school, Mr. Yost, Mr. Saylor, and myself. We wanted to discuss the NFHS contract that day and we did that. And there was conversation between Mr. Wallingford and the five of us about what the contract consisted of. We did discuss in that conversation, in that meeting, if Mr. Wallingford would be willing to, in order to keep the live streams the way it was, the current live streaming, if he would be willing to make a contribution from the ad revenue to the athletic fund, because there was money involved, as everybody's aware, with this NFHS contract that would come back to the student athletes. And at that time, he was not interested in that offer. So, we moved on and asked, Mr. Wallingford actually asked for time to come up with a proposal and we felt that that was in best interest for everybody because we would like to keep it local and continue what we've had a long partnership for the last 25, 30 years, I guess. We allowed that and we ended the meeting and then there was a second face-to-face meeting. In that second meeting, it was Mr. Wallingford, myself, Mr. Saylor, and Mr. Yost. In that meeting, it was discussed, the NFHS contract was discussed again. And it was, as we want to be, let this be on the record, it was discussed about going behind the paywall. And he could mimic at that time the contract. There were differences between what he was willing to offer and the NFHS contract would offer. But we wanted to keep it local, so we were willing to talk and negotiate with that offer with him. We waited, I think we put it back in Mr. Wallingford's hands and said, you know, we'll wait to hear from you. I think Mr. Saylor was supposed to send an email, if I am correct, with kind of what we had agreed on, the agreement, the cameras, that type of stuff. They, Mr. Saylor, sent an email on August the 14th to ask for a status update. There was no response. And I think, Mr. Saylor, if I'm correct in the email, you did apologize for the delay. There was a delay from that previous meeting. So, on, I want to make sure I get this straight, so I am looking at notes, I apologize. I think Mr. Saylor at that time reached out again on September 16th, which was last week, and sent an email and said he would like to give the board an update on where we were. The board was under the impression at this time that it was a done deal. We were staying with Mr. Wallingford and we're going to have the benefits of live streaming and everything through him with the same type cameras and all of that. We thought it was a done deal. There was an email that was sent back saying that, at that time, Mr. Wallingford did not feel like he could fulfill those, what he had said he could do. And that if the board needed to move on and NFHS was what we needed to do, that was, you know, we needed to move on from a time standpoint. I do want to know, I do want to make sure that is on record, that Mr. Saylor reached out to myself, the chairperson, and Donna Isfert, the vice chair, on Friday and asked if we would like to add Mr. Wallingford to the agenda for this meeting tonight. And we both said no. We did not feel like that there was anything else left to negotiate because he could not fulfill the end of the proposal that he had put on the table for us, which we felt was a win-win for everybody. At that time, I just wanted it to be known that Mr. Saylor did not refuse access to the board. And one other thing I want to make sure that is clear, that was stated, that I felt was misconstrued a little bit, was we have a board agenda, we have a board meeting every month. And the agenda always has consent items on it. And if you watch the board meetings, you'll see the agenda's posted, you can see what's on there. The month of July, when it had NFHS contract under consent items, we were all, as board members, aware that that was on the agenda under consent items. That was not hidden, it was not trying to pull the wool over our eyes. We knew and there had been discussions. That night, we felt as a board that it was important that we pull that out and discuss it for further and give Mr. Wallingford and WBON the opportunity to come with a proposal before we made a decision. So if you're familiar with public meetings, that is normal routine to do that. And we did pull it out and held it and did not vote that night because we knew there was going to be a meeting the next day with Mr. Wallingford and we wanted to discuss that. So, we did vote, Mr. Saylor did give a recommendation on conditional offer, or conditional approval, sorry. And we did vote that night for conditional approval, but that meant, this was a timeliness issue. NFHS put this offer out to every high school across the nation because of this pandemic and because kids may not get to be, people may not get to attend sporting events. We looked at this as an opportunity. This was not something that we looked at to do away with our local partnership. We just saw this as an opportunity and we wanted to weigh everything we had, what was going to be best for our student athletes. So, while, I want to make sure that was clear because at no time did we feel like it was being pushed under the rug and hid and trying to be approved. And there were several meetings, as I just said, you guys, face-to-face meetings. And if that was Mr. Saylor's intentions, he could have very well went on and signed that contract. He had approval from us, he had conditional approval. But he did not do that because his word to us as a board was, "We want to try to work this out with local partners" and that's what we want to do. So, I just want to say, Mr. Wallingford, the board feels like that the ball is in your court. We can have a win-win for the Estill County athletes and our local business community partners yourself. With the, if we sign this contract with the NFHS and given you the local broadcasting rights, I know that's been a big debate and that's going to be discussed, so that will, I'm not the expert on that, but that will come up and you all will find out that that is a possible, I mean, that, we can do that. We have, we own the rights as the district to the broadcasting rights. And I know Mr. Saylor posted several videos, just as examples, so people could go on and see what NFHS is like. And if you listened or looked at any of those videos, those were local radio broadcasters doing the play-by-play. So, again, we feel like this can be a win-win for our community and our student athletes. So at this time, we'd like you, Mr. Wallingford, to have time to address the board.
Is my mic on? Thank you, Council Lady Hardy. I appreciate the opportunity here tonight. I want to make a couple of clarifications. And if any time in our negotiations that the option was on the table for my company to just make a donation and make all of this go away, I don't recall that. And I apologize if that got lost in the shuffle somewhere, but I assure you, if that was an option, we, none of us would have had to go through this process whatsoever. The other thing is, is that pertaining to the denial to the board meeting, the email I received said that that request had been denied. Is that fair?
Yes, originally it was denied by Donna and I.
Yes. And I was given the opportunity to ask one question on the public comments online.
At that time, yes, sir.
Right. And I've been forthright that we got that reversed and was glad to do that. And we've had full disclosure about that. So with that, several weeks ago, yes, Mr. Saylor, others, and I did meet over the course of only two meetings and discussed his desire for us to provide a proposal to mirror the NHFS contract. We pursued this request because it would include a best-of-both-world solution, but at no point was that proposal a goal for a 100% paywall. What we discussed would still leave the local school board with their broadcast rights, which would permit us to continue to include Estill County schools and some of our public free streaming broadcasts as we do. At no time were we discussing putting all Estill County sports behind a paywall. Our position's always been clear, we don't think a paywall is a good move for a host of reason. But the primary reasons is it disenfranchises your students from exposures and experiences that they enjoy. It disenfranchises those who can't afford it or have poor internet service. And it takes these broadcasts that we do away from a community that we know are grateful to have them. The cameras and setup Mr. Saylor and I discussed us doing, out of circumstances beyond our control, was not ultimately an option. The NFHS and the camera providers have an exclusive agreement, we discovered. And we were told they won't provide us with those cameras or even have a conversation with us to put them in any high school. Sadly for us, to get that information, it took several weeks for them to respond to our multiple inquiries. Weeks that we have lost valuable time developing suitable options to fit an urgent timetable. I do hope you all listened to the presentation Tuesday night. We took that time mainly to speak directly to all of you and offer you perspectives. We so much wanted to be able to be here and communicate in person at either of the previous two board meetings. And to present a clear understanding of the facts that this NFH contract, NFHS, will stop what we do as far as any public free exposure of your sporting events where streaming is concerned. It was intended to be and done respectfully. And we only proceeded with that program when we were notified. We would not get this opportunity to appear and have a thoughtful discussion. We could not do that in a comment. We are thankful to have that decision reconsidered and have this opportunity tonight to clear up that information to several of your questions. You heard you could still permit us to be at regular season games and that was incorrect. And we will give you that language from the NFHS contract clearly stating that. You heard you could still permit us to stream district tournament games. The KHSAA, or the Kentucky High School Athletic Association, owns the rights to postseason broadcasts. And they too have a separate financial agreement with the NFHS. And it also clearly states, no one else will stream those games again from schools that are part of this NFHS. We submit that confirmation from the KHSAA. You were told that you could plug our radio transmissions into the NFHS broadcast. We only stated that that would require our consent and we would like to stay in the partnership so that we can continue to do that. But there are regulations concerning unauthorized retransmissions and that is just not something that could be done unilaterally. One of the many glaring differences in NFHS robot camera broadcasts and what we do is most of the broadcasts do not include any audio. And we do provide that with a couple of guys that we all know and love. And the community is also grateful to their 30-year labor of love to Estill County athletics as we are through our broadcast. Tonight, I mainly come here with one request of all of you, and that's time. Time for you to consider what we are now presenting with the understanding that it is not an urgent matter. The worst-case scenario is the school doesn't get two free cameras and that's all. In return for us being granted that time, we offer you this alternate proposal. And I apologize again, I never thought anything other than mirroring this proposal and doing a paywall was an option. This pandemic is now and the challenges for your athletic department that you're facing are today. The offer by the NFHS states it is due to the pandemic that they're offering the free cameras. The irony of that offer is the infrastructure will not realistically be ready until next sports season at the earliest. Even if you go with the NFHS contract, the soonest it would be online and operative in all likelihood would be next fall. And that, by that time, we all pray we're in a different place where fans can return and gate money will return. And this is no longer a challenge for your athletic departments. So, when Mr. Saylor stated you're facing games without fans, that's now, right now, today. So, as he said, we are offering to step up to the plate in that manner and do something for your athletic department now when it's really needed. We know that our viewers and listeners, this community, your students and fans are very grateful and greatly enjoy our professional broadcasts that we've been doing for nearly five years now. Exceptional broadcasts that are in stark contrast to the NFHS broadcast. We know they would very much, very much like to continue to have free access to these professional broadcasts and will support them. So we will set up a donational account to benefit the Estill County Athletic Department and to help you keep local broadcasting games on free access. We will ask them to contribute to this fund for Estill County Athletics and we will recognize these donors on our broadcast. Once we reach $1,000 in donations, my company will pledge to match that amount, making the total $2,000. If for some reason that I don't see, that we fail to raise an initial $1,000, we commit to make up any shortfalls guaranteeing a $2,000 minimum contribution. But we will continue this effort in many ways through the entire sports season, with sports or not. We will do this by one mechanism or another because everything is still in flux and we don't know what sports we will have or not. We will raise all we can to help you with the pandemic challenges, issues you have today, with all proceeds going to Estill Athletics. And from our research, this amount will far eclipse the revenue for similar-sized schools from NFHS for some time. We will handle that all, the fund will be public. And at the end of the season, we will write a check for the raised amount plus our matching amount of $1,000 to the Athletic Department as a donation at a time where our company is facing the biggest financial challenges as well in our history. But we do want to help you now. And next year, if things are back to normal and your gate money and challenges are different, then we hope that you can then help us in return by continuing to support and continue to keep these broadcasts we do on free access. And with the money that is raised, you can pay referees and related expenses for students and help with immediate challenges this year that has brought challenges to all of us. Or you can air-mark that money and put aside for later to put toward the cameras that worst-case you won't get free and is causing this urgency and rush to action. So we pledge that help to you now, this season, for that time that I think we all should take. We pledge that help to say thank you for allowing us to be part of this conversation, a needed conversation. To say thank you for your consideration of the great investment we've made to do your games. For your thoughtful questions that you did ask, acknowledging your concerns. For our interest and our valued relationship we in the school system have enjoyed forever. To say thank you for giving us the time we will need in the months going forward to react to your desires and goals. Time to continue to add content for your other programs. Time that will diffuse this sense of urgency to act immediately. Time for further due diligence on NFHS and what other similar schools are actually realizing monetarily. And above all, time to not put any of you in a position where you have to choose one option over another. It does not have to be one way or another. The upside in staying with us and giving us this little concession of time, if you feel you have made the wrong decision in giving us this window, you will always have this NFHS option available to you next season or at any time in the future. If you go with the NFHS contract and feel you've made that decision wrongly, you are then locked into a five-year commitment and are powerless to undo it. With us, we're always here daily to work together with the school system to be constantly evolving what we do so that all parties are happy and are winners. And we can continue to provide all those opportunities for your students to be involved in all the other things we offer year-long for them to participate in, that they enjoy. Like our sports shows, sports stories we do and features, our new television station that will do news and sports very soon, the mentoring programs we discussed, and so on. To continue to keep the students in the public eye for fun and lasting memories and experiences. Experiences that they've taken the time to write to us and share with us in recent days. Stories I'd like to share more tonight, but our time is limited, but they do mean the world to us. We've prepared a packet tonight for Mr. Saylor and all the board members that outlines the offer to spearhead this donation effort this year. And although I want to stay focused on the positives tonight, the packet does include many complaints about NFHS with the Better Business Bureau, where they have an F-rating, which is the worst issued by the Better Business Bureau. We found extensive complaints from people on their own social site with issues ranging from overcharges to ongoing charges they did not approve, bad visibility of games, games cutting off during the broadcast or not being on at all, cameras not working, and so forth. And we felt you should see those because we know these are real and regular occurrences and what happens when you take the human element and the ability to respond to issues out of these broadcasts. As we said earlier, it took us weeks to speak to them. And people will be looking to someone to complain to when they run into those situations. I promise you too, again, we will always be far more accessible and responsive locally, just a phone call or email away. It also includes the supporting documentation I referred to earlier regarding the information you heard expressed in previous board meetings. After my time tonight, we'll hear from Mr. Julian Tackett, head of the Kentucky High School Athletic Association. And as I understand Mr. Saylor to say last week at the board meeting, Mr. Tackett is also on the board at the NFHS, who has entered into a financial agreement with the Kentucky High School Athletic Association. We expect you'll hear other schools who have opted into this offer know that there is an equal list of schools who have not for various reasons, ranging from the small amounts of revenue the schools actually realize from the subscriptions, with 90% of the revenue per games going out of state, to others pursuing alternatives with their local broadcasters, as we are proposing, to some that are just happy with their current arrangements and relationships. I want to speak briefly about the paywall. A paywall set up for broadcasting is a big project that also takes time. And even though we could not do what Mr. Saylor and us discussed that certain way, doesn't mean that's still not an option anywhere in the future. It's not one we advocate or ever have. I do understand that one of the biggest appeals of this automated camera system to school districts is it will provide more coverage for other sports and activities that do not currently get the same exposure as football and basketball. With the proper time and working together, I'm certain that if this is ultimately what it comes to and what the board needs to do down the road, we can find a way to do that and still keep featuring special games and events on our public networks the way that we do, so everyone wins. And with us, all options are always going to be able to be explored. We continue to add new features and new content each year in our lineup of broadcasts. Our general manager, Michael Watkins, has already had talks in that regard just last week with your ADs and Principal Yost on how we can soon add more coverage for students involved in other sports like volleyball and soccer for them. And they seem happy with those prospects. We're also very excited about the new Estill County Sports Complex and facilities in the works. And when that comes to fruition, I think you would be very happy for us to show that engineer pride in that accomplishment with everyone everywhere as opposed to hid behind a paywall. It also occurred to me that this will give you the ability to expand softball and volleyball. But the contract says you cannot buy any further cameras, so that will preclude any broadcast of baseball and girls' softball that we do. So where you gain in one regard, you will lose in another. And we will not be there to be able to provide those broadcasts either. I know there's still a best-of-both-worlds win-win solution to be found. And only taking away the urgency of this decision will give those efforts the chance they deserve to play out. So we hope our offer to help you now in your time of challenge demonstrates our sincerity to get that done. Give us that time. We've always been your broadcast partner. We've been here for you from the beginning for many, many years. And we'll be here till the end, good times or bad, profit or loss, pandemic or not, as we always have been. It's my belief that all of that has more value than two free cameras. And doesn't the community's access to see their kids, grandkids, neighbors, friends, and students also have a value? In closing, I do want to say I regret that things got off track in the last week. But I do have strong convictions and other perspectives that differ greatly from this proposal. And I don't believe it has to end badly for anyone. I felt that was worth standing up for and pursuing and working toward because there are a lot of folks that would like to see this get worked out. Our friends, family, and this community. And although the process may have been a little rocky, we're grateful to get this opportunity tonight to come to you and have this conversation and answer any of your questions pertaining to our company and ongoing ventures directly and remedy the answers that you heard. That was worth it and all we ever asked for. So on behalf of our hard-working staff and the Estill County community that enjoys what they bring them, thank you all kindly for the opportunity. And I do have the packets for all of you that I would like to submit to you. And if you have any questions with me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. Anybody have questions? We would like for you to stick around for the rest of the board meeting.
My screen's black.
Mr. Tackett. Can you hear us? For some reason I can't hear him. Commissioner, thank you for attending tonight, and I know you want to make a brief statement, and then the board may have some questions for you, so thank you for your time.
Not a problem. Glad to be here.
We'll go ahead and let you start with whatever comments that you might want to make.
Well, Mr. Saylor, I can tell you that starting in the spring, we started looking nationally at a way to allow our schools to stream contests, because even back then, it began to look like we were going to be looking at limited attendance. And so the National Federation Network, which is headquartered out of Atlanta, came up with a plan where they're providing the opportunity for each school to acquire two of these units at no charge. They're about $5,000, and they are doing it at no charge and entering into an agreement with the school to stream as many of their events as possible. And then the school has a revenue opportunity that is fairly unusual in the market in that if you sell, season passes, the more you sell, the more the school benefits. So it's a great opportunity for the schools to perhaps replace some of the revenue they might have lost through ticketed attendance. We know that thus far, we've got about 40 schools that have signed up. It's now, I take it this afternoon, I got a report, it may be as high as over 50 schools that are signing up for the free units in addition to the 40, 41 or 42 schools that were on the network already. So it is certainly something that our state is gravitating toward as we realize that a significant portion of this year, we're going to have limited attendance for sporting events. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you all, and if you don't mind, if you've got any questions, I'm probably going to turn the camera off. Unfortunately, I've got a little bit of a problem, maybe I need to get Jeremy up here to the house to fix it, but got a little bit of a problem hearing you all, so I'm probably just going to bring the phone a little closer and try to make sure that's taken care of.
Just make sure you all unmute on the Google Meet when you need to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Tackett.
Commissioner Tackett, my name's Donna Isford. I'm the vice chair of the Estill County Board of Education. We are very honored and appreciative that you would join us tonight and take time out of your busy schedule. We have a lot of people that are very anxious about this proposal, and we have several questions that we as a board would like to have answered. The first question that I have involves the contract, and we were wondering if it has any impact on radio rights to our games.
No, ma'am, there's absolutely no impact on radio. It is strictly an exclusive related to web streaming in exchange for the free cameras. There's no impact at all on radio. I know early on, there was some information, a couple of different parts of the state, they got a copy of a contract out of, I think it was Alabama, which has a different set of rules than we do. We specifically protected radio in our original network agreement. We have our own radio network for different championship events, and it certainly has no impact on radio.
Commissioner Tackett, this is Rod Hardy, I'm the chair, and the question that I have, and I just want clarification, I think I understand, there had been a question come up about district games, and I know, I think I'm sure on regular season district games, we would have those rights. It's only postseason that KHSA has those rights. Am I correct?
Well, yes, ma'am, and let me clarify that even further to make sure the technical piece is there, so you are fully informed. Our agreement, the KHSA's agreement for the network excludes postseason play past regular season up until the region anyway. We knew when we signed this agreement a few years back that the likelihood of being able to manage a statewide network for 64 districts on boys and girls basketball in particular was not feasible. So you would have, for all games played at your facilities, you have the web streaming exclusive, and then for the district tournament, because those rights are technically owned by the association, there is a fee for anyone that comes in to stream, but that fee is waived for anybody that has the pixel lock cameras or is on the network. So in other words, you all would benefit from the ability to have the game streamed so that all your people that bought a season-long pass could see them, and you would not have to pay that district or even region rights fee because you're already on the network. Those that are in the school broadcasting program are exempt from fees that other outside groups might have to pay. So it really does kind of extend beyond, and certainly would allow you to have tremendous flexibility in any postseason event that you are hosting.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Julie.
Yes, sir.
Are they able to have that entity stream that district tournament?
Well, we've talked to the folks, the company that actually is the backbone of the network is a company called Play On Sports out of Atlanta, and we've talked to them about this. And because the district is kind of in between their sweet spot, so to speak, there is a lot of flexibility. I will tell you that in talking to their representatives in the last couple of days about another school system, that would be something they could easily protect or not protect if you wanted to in the final agreement. They're trying to do the same agreement with everybody, but we always have negotiation points, and in this case, you all could restrict it so that your subscription holders have the exclusive viewing, or you could allow that to be someone else to come in by voting the schools in the district, and as long as they paid a requisite fee, that is available. So you really have a lot of flexibility with this. My understanding and the way that we've been told every time we've asked this question is your obligation is to use the free units to stream even if you have someone else there legally streaming. And I hope that makes sense, Mr. Saylor, because I think part of it is to protect those people. Let's say that you sell the 400 passes to your community that ends up resulting in a pretty good revenue stream for the school system, and those people get used to watching that all season, they likely wouldn't want to go to another source to find the broadcast. So as long as you've got it up there, they can keep doing what they've done all along. That doesn't keep you from entering into negotiations with a third party, or it doesn't keep you from saying no, it's exclusive. You would have complete control there.
Commissioner, this is Donna Isford again.
Yes, ma'am.
I've had a lot of people in the community contact me, and they have a lot of concerns about once the cameras are installed, who's responsible for maintenance, and what do we do if a camera goes down? Is there a timeframe for someone to respond and get those fixed? Who exactly is responsible for maintaining those cameras?
The folks at Play On Sports maintain a round-the-clock support network whenever they've got a game being broadcast in the schedule. What happens, this is a practical matter, is your athletic director, principal, or some other designated would pre-program into a scheduler exactly when your games are. It could be as automated as you put in the schedule and never do another thing, or it could be more manual depending on what you want to do. So when those cameras kick on, when those cameras don't kick on, you have an 800 number, you have toll-free technical support all the time, that's part of their deal, because their entire intent in all of this is to get more programming shown on the network. They're not, their sweet spot, so to speak, is not necessarily the local community only watching local. It's the third-party subscriber that happens to watch what's going on. My nephew and I last Friday spent probably two and a half hours watching all or part of 40 different football games that were on the network, because we're looking at broadcast quality, we're looking at all kinds of things. It's however you want to do it, but they do have a technical support area, technical support staff that is there all the time as long as they have an event scheduled to be webcast. That's their job down in Atlanta, and they have a huge support team that's managing this.
And I think to add to that, Commissioner, what about maintenance on a camera that actually maybe has some kind of mechanical issue, or is there staff that is close by here in the state that can take care of that?
Yes, they have contracted in every state, and 45 of us, 45 state associations are in the network, they have contracted with people. I don't know who the current company is in Kentucky, but they have more than one, that if they do have a physical problem, they can get it either fixed or replaced. There is a very, I don't know, it's very customer-friendly warranty for these devices, and they work with you from the install on making sure that it's protected and it's not subject to normal, anything other than just unplanned wear and tear, and they have a staff both in Atlanta and regional contacts with different tech companies that can take care of maintenance. You're not going to be left in alert because somebody doesn't, isn't available to answer your call. That's part of the contract with them, that's part of the benefit they get from getting all these broadcasts on, is a revenue stream from either advertising or general views or corporate availability from different states. They have a lot of ways that they're generating small amounts that add up to good amounts, and that's why, that's what they pay their people for. There is no more, the one thing about this compared to other offerings that are out there, there is no annual fee, there's no additional maintenance fee, it is all contained in the original install, and then anything further through the warranty period, they are responsible for.
Good evening, I'm a new board member. I have a question. I've been asked several times, I know with our original contract, we will get two cameras, one on our football field and one in our gymnasium. What are our chances of getting a camera or more additional cameras in the future for maybe our baseball and softball games?
There won't be any issue with that. Right now, their staff is focused, they've got a commitment right now of a little over 2,000 of these units to install, that are trying to get installed by the end of October. Their sales team will reopen the opportunity to purchase additional units, and as a matter of fact, I got an update in the last 48 hours that the automation that follows, including what's called the bots at the bottom of the screen that follow the game and follow the ball in the air, et cetera, all of that, their baseball, softball is pretty much production-ready right now. They were not set up a year ago to do baseball, softball, they will be when they go live for sales. Their executive director told me that in the last 48 hours. So we're excited about that opportunity. It's a little different mounting to a place at a baseball, softball field that is secure from being hit by a ball, but they have worked out the bugs in that, and they feel like when they go open to start selling units again in late fall, they'll be ready for baseball and softball, certainly be ready by next spring. They want to, I'm sure they want to be at that beautiful complex you all are building.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tackett, this is Brian Covey. How are you doing?
Yes, Mr. Covey, doing well.
Actually, she stole my question, so I've got another one. So I've been watching my cats or something on my favorite TV station, and something goes bad with the internet or something with a pay-per-view that happens to mess up that stream, just asking for the folks that are not currently here. So how would that work if something beyond our control happened with one of these events? I'm not sure if it would or wouldn't. Would that happen to be prorated or anything like that due to missing the event?
Well, the one advantage to the model that they've got is you are not paying for a single event. When you subscribe, you are subscribing to a month's worth of events, and you're getting the whole country. So there may be that occasional, I know two of the football games we were trying to watch Friday night had technical issues, the cameras had not been fine-tuned. The good thing is they can remotely fix them. I was on the phone with the county athletic director in Scott County, telling him what I was seeing on their view, and they were able from Atlanta to fine-tune the camera, they had too much light in one spot, and they were able to fine-tune those cameras. Their tech staff is great. Now, if you have, there's probably the possibility, you can't deny it's possible, just like it is with a radio broadcast or a regular broadcast, that you have a complete power failure or something to that effect. One of the advantages of the network is if you're, even if your coaches are videotaping, if you're, if somebody has it, you're able to upload that into the spot that people would have watched, and they can watch that at another time. That's the advantage of cord-cutting or not having to watch everything on live television. You might have a few people watching the game at 7:30 when it's played, but you might have a few more watch it the next morning because they work second shift. You can upload a replacement game, but we have not, that has not been something in the six or seven, I guess it's eight years of the network, that has been very isolated when that has happened, and that's part of the reason their tech staff spends so much time with your tech staff on what's the best way to get the internet signal, make sure it's reliable, what's the best way to make sure that we're not on the power circuit with four other air conditioners that draw all the power, I mean, how can we do this? They really work through that in the configuration, and I think that's probably why they haven't had very many incidents.
Thanks for that explanation. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I have another question. We have had some conversation concerning broadcast of our band competitions. If our school district obtains the proper copyright permission, are we able to broadcast those events?
You absolutely are, and as a matter of fact, you can make the decision one way or the other whether or not those are behind the paywall or not. There are a lot of school districts in this country, last year, that put their graduations on the network, they put their different social activities, their award ceremonies, their band shows. You can work with the network scheduling and decide what is required to be behind the paywall, deals more with sports itself, but you certainly could do other things, you could, I'm just thinking cheerleading competitions, I'm thinking all kinds of things that your people might feel like their $10, $11 a month is better spent if they had something besides sports, you most certainly can do that, as long as it's in the venue where that camera is, and you have the ability, because you'll be a member of the network, you could actually use other equipment to stream, broadcast onto the network if you wanted to, if they were not held in your gym, in your football field, or on your baseball, softball field. You have a lot of flexibility because you basically are going to be given an opportunity to add inventory to that network.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Commissioner, I do have one other question that I would ask you to clarify, and that is that the KHSA does have its own separate contract with NFHS, and that in no way, form, or fashion, your contract is totally separate, and that the schools, none of the contributions that the schools do or anything with the schools go towards the KHSA in any way whatsoever.
You are, from my seat, Mr. Saylor, unfortunately, correct. You know, it would be nice if this were a revenue opportunity, but it is a totally separate agreement. We have a license to. We have a license fee that they pay us to put all our state championships on there. Beyond that, everything else, this is truly something that everybody, that their board came up with as a means of helping the schools and get the network more accessibility. But there is no benefit to the state associations for this at all. You know, not for the cameras, not for anything. We, as a matter of fact, have asked them to consider installing cameras at a couple of the high school facilities that we use for championship play, such as Louisville Valley. And we've asked them to install that regardless of whether or not Valley wants it, but just so we could use it. And there's no benefit we would gain from that either. So no, sir, you are, from a business standpoint, from the job I hold, that's not necessarily the answer I'd like to give, but it is without question, we feel like it would be a conflict of interest if we were getting revenue off of your fans. That's just not appropriate and we don't.
Commissioner Tackett, this is Sheila Samples, Board Member. I have a question. Approximately how many schools in our district and region have signed up for the NSHS program?
I'm gonna, I may have to ask someone to repeat that, I did not hear you and I apologize.
Let me try this again because I'm having trouble with my mic. How many schools in our region and district have signed up for the NSFH program?
I would have to go through and look and maybe ask for an updated list from them. I don't have a list broken down by region, but I know between the Pixelot Unit Free Program and the regular network membership, we are a little over 100 schools out of our 280 high schools. So it is, this certainly has picked up the momentum, the two free units, has more. I could get that information from Mr. Saylor, it might take a couple of days or two. But I don't know that we've tried to break it down by region. We have had so many people beaten down the door because it's free and every other service that they've heard about have a cost to it that we really almost have stopped to take time to try to see what school and what district are in there. We've simply, our only promise when we got it is we said, we'll help you promote it, it's up to the schools if they do it. And that's about as far as we've gone. But after you all get involved, if you decide to okay, contract or whatever, we can certainly find out who else because there may be other things that you all want to do, information sharing with those districts that are already on board.
Thank you.
Ms. Samples, I do know that Lee County High School is one of the more recent schools. We had this update at the last KHSWA Board of Control meeting. Just schools that are local to us and now, remember this is two weeks ago, so there's been other schools. But schools that are sort of, maybe that we would consider close, I'm trying to get this to run down and I don't know if I'm...
That was one of the questions that parents asked me and that was...
Yeah, it looks like, you know, Bourbon County, somebody familiar to us because of band. And you've got Jenkins High School, which is a former 14th region, 15th region school. Montgomery County, Rowland County is a school close to, Shelby Valley is a Pike County school. And all of your Fayette County schools have just went on to the network. Matter of fact, you have an article from the Lexan Herald Leader as part of your attachment concerning all of the Fayette County schools and their most recent adoption of this type of system.
One of the things that I don't want to miss the chance to remind people of, right now, what we're really talking about is a free automated camera. But what a number of districts have done, both in our state and around the country, is tie this into a broadcasting class, tie it into the classroom where for the technology aspect, there are ports on this machine that you can take an audio feed in, you can have your kids do the broadcast, you can have existing broadcasters feed it. You've got all kinds of options if you didn't want just the static noise of the crowd. And the academic side of it is where several people have kind of, it's piqued their interest the last couple of weeks. Broadcasting programs within the schools are tough to sustain because when you're trying to do all of the video and audio and then certain kids graduate or certain kids move away or the wrong faculty member decides to retire, you lose that momentum. This would allow a whole lot more continuity and we've had quite a bit of interest expressed in that. So I know as you look at the list of schools, there's a variety of reasons why people might come in or not. And partly, you know, everyone comes in for a different reason. It's not always about the revenue from subscriptions, a lot of times it can be about the educational fees.
Commissioner, this is Rhonda again. I was just wondering, we've been told that NFHS has an F rating with the Better Business Bureau. Is there any way that you can address that for us?
I can tell you that's false. There is absolutely nothing into that regard. And I can talk to the folks in Atlanta, the NFHS network is actually a model for a number of other businesses that have tried to come up and maybe try to get our schools to agree to free streaming. We continue to say that, it's just hard for me to fathom, and you may have seen this comment in the paper, it's hard for me to fathom that you charge Grandma at the door but you let Uncle Joe watch it for free. That's just, you know, I just kind of, I'm not sure that's the best model, that's your choice, that's everybody's choice. But we have not heard one thing about the network that's negative at all. And being on their board, and I'm new to their board, brand new this fall, but we see nothing but good reports out of every business and industry rating that we have seen. So that is, I would almost say category, but that's not true.
I do have a question. Commissioner Tackett, I'm not sure if you can hear me, this is Rhonda Hardy, I've lost connection, but I do have one additional question that I would just like to, if you could clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
Local broadcasting or streaming of the ballgames, can you explain that?
Okay, I heard streaming, but I didn't hear the word right before.
If a local broadcasting company wants to stream a ballgame, what are those rights?
Well, that part of my understanding, and of course the draft contract, I don't know where you all are in terms of negotiations, but the contract precludes anyone else from streaming. Now, what it does allow, or has allowed in the past, in our events, and I'm only talking about the state events, is if we had a broadcast outlet that was paying the proper fee, you all probably know WINT routinely comes to our football finals and covers the 13th, 14th, 15th region teams and they pay a price for that. They also, at the same time, stream it to their online channel. That is not considered originating the stream to where it would be a conflict. We have been allowed to have them do that. That's probably a definite, a deep-down specific, but you are not going to sell passes that you want to sell as a revenue source if you're going to let other people stream it for free. It's not going to work. And that's just a business observation. So that's why streaming, they do exclude, they don't touch radio and over-the-air TV they work with you on. You know, if you were to have a once-a-year game, somebody, you're the game of the week, and do it, we have had schools do that. We've also had schools that will have that entity that does their games, stream it over the network so that your subscribers always have access to that broadcast. So there is some flexibility, but they're not going to probably let a streaming competitor broadcast that game when they've expended the money for these cameras, et cetera, so that you can have everything broadcast. That is, I don't see them doing that. I think streaming is streaming, you do have a streaming exclusive.
Thank you, sir.
So Commissioner, just to sum up.
We had a local broadcast partner that still wanted to do Red Red, that owns a access to a local television station that on a basis up to the district that may make them a game in the game of the season. We wanted to, for our public, allow our public to be able to watch it. You know, go with it sort of as an outreach throughout the community. They do sports programming, they do sports shows, they do all types of interviews for student athletes. They put it on their local television stations, all that is allowed. The only thing they're not allowed to do is stream the game through the internet and that is it.
That is my understanding of the contract and that is something that you would want your board attorney, as you all got ready to sign this, to make sure that that's in there. When I talked to the CEO of the network in the last, I think it was yesterday, my days are getting mixed up, I apologize. But I believe it was yesterday, one of the things they said is that if you have a particular provision, if there's somebody, there's always, in a lot of the districts, there's always this grandfathering they want to try to do. So maybe we want to let somebody do one game ever, you know, per season or a game or two per season. And then talk to them about getting that written in to protect if that's what you want. Now, there's others that frankly, and I don't know your situation, so don't get me wrong, but there's other places that because that broadcast entity is kind of, they've kind of gotten the benefit without much, without putting out much effort, certainly not without financial support in the district, they kind of want to box them out, then they don't have to do that. You have some flexibility, but the streaming is what is definitely exclusive. And you'd want to protect that. And you want, to be honest with you, so you want to protect that from your own standpoint for your subscription sales. I mean, you don't want to be the guy selling the sandwich for $10 and the guy next door is giving away the same sandwich for free. You're not going to sell many $10 sandwiches. So you have to decide, do I want to offer an olive branch? Kind of, let's find a way to do this within the contract or we like it just exclusive? And that's what most everybody's doing, but there is some customization available. They recognize that a lot of our schools have been around a long time and there's longstanding relationships. And we need to make sure that everybody in the community stays as one team. So yes, you would certainly want to talk to them about that, talk to the CEO about that and they can certainly help you. Anyone else?
I think I have one more question.
One more question, Commissioner? Yes, sir.
And this is Ginny again. Do we have a timeline as to if we bought into this contract as to when these cameras would be installed?
Well, part of that depends on your option for installation. There are two installation options. They will install it for a flat fee, they'll come in and do it. And for that, it's a matter of getting in line, wherever the line is, I don't know. It might be a week, it might be a month, I'm not 100% sure. There is the self-install option and you have a time window in which to get it done, I believe it's 30 days. What they don't want is to ship you the units and them sit in the storage room for six months while your staff gets around to doing it. So if you were trying to accelerate it, you might want to look at that second option where you install it. It's apparently a fairly direct install, it is a lot like mounting just a larger security camera. Now, you have location things you have to worry about, but you know, I've got to be near power, I've got to be near an internet connection, those kind of things. So when you look at those decisions, you may be able to control the pace of installation, is my long answer to your short question.
Hey, Commissioner, let me just add to that, just one other thing. We're getting ready tonight for a schematic design, I believe we will, on a new football stadium, at least a renovation of that stadium, so it doesn't make a whole lot of sense with where we're at in the season. And of course, we're beginning a red county, we're the county's championship athletics again next week because of that status. So the football season is going to be over practically before perhaps we can even get this done. Would we go ahead and make, if we were going to make the purchase, if we entered into this contract, would we go ahead and try to install one on our gymnasium but then wait until we're ready to open that stadium and access them or to have that thing open and running and that, or is that something we have to just work out with them and work themselves?
Well, you'll be working with them, but that is exactly what's going on in a lot of our schools. They are, they're either renovating or they feel like they're too far in, it's late September, let's don't kill ourselves over the fall, but let's be ready for basketball. There's a number doing that. The other thing is if you, you know, you may want to strategically think, I don't know the opening of your baseball, softball complex, but if it were going to be in the spring of '21, then maybe you talk to them about installing in the gym and the baseball field and if you get ready to buy the second, the third unit, that goes to the football next year with your renovation. You've got some strategy planning you can do. One more question, Donna has one more question.
We've got a Donna at home, so we don't have time.
This is my last question for the night. What is our sense of urgency? Are they going to run out of cameras? Is it something that we have to be in a rush about? Is there plenty to go around? What's our sense of urgency? Do we have time? Explain that.
I haven't heard anything that makes me feel like they're going to run out of cameras, but anytime you're giving something away free, that's a possibility. I can tell you, we're looking right now at the end of September. If you wanted to be ready to go for basketball, there is a sense of urgency. You're going to need to make a decision and start down the road of at least that installation pretty soon, especially if you're going to have them do it. Because you not only want to allow for the fairly brief time it will take to mount a camera and get things running, but you want that testing time. You all asked questions earlier about problems we might encounter and things we've got to do. I know we are two weeks into the football season and both of the schools in Scott County play at the same field and their cameras really just now getting calibrated. It was installed earlier, but now they're using it. You probably don't want to get yourself in a situation where you're not installing until first part of November and you're already playing and your people that have paid subscriptions don't have the right broadcast. So if you're planning on using it for basketball, which is certainly a great market for you to look at, this decision needs to be made sooner rather than later. Anybody else?
Commissioner, we thank you for your time, I know we went over just a little bit.
Not a problem, appreciate all the work the board's doing and what we're doing. If there's any way we can help you, we'd love to know. Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have, we're going to hear from the high school and middle school principal as well as the athletic director. And I think we have some questions for you guys, is that, okay, if we do it that way? I know we value everyone's time that's here, so. Okay, I think I have the first question. Mr. Yost, Mr. Moore, you all were in the first meeting with Mr. Wallingford and Mr. Yost, I know you were in the first and second meeting with us. Can you talk to us about your perception of the negotiations during those meetings? In the first meeting, and out of respect to the board, you all asked for negotiations to be entered in with the local media company with Wallingford. And the first discussion, and honestly, I'm really kind of shocked about the statements because the first discussion that was made was the discussion of an ad revenue possibility. Because that would have been the simplest and most straightforward option and that was kind of, along with the priority that Austin and I had for being able to universally cover all of our sports through streaming, those were really the two goals we kind of went in with. And after that was turned down, then the conversation turned toward the paywall option more along the lines with what NFHS had proposed. Thank you. Mr. Moore, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am, with him being in both meetings, he pretty much summed up the one that I took part in.
Thank you.
How does the amount of games that can be streamed with NFHS compare to the streaming coverage we currently receive from WBON?
So as far as comparison between the two, we looked in through WBON's Facebook page, WBON's Facebook page as well as their YouTube channel and not all the streams were on there. So I don't want to speak to a specific number. If I was guessing, since we're talking mainly football, boys' basketball, some girls' basketball, of course, I think it was referenced online, there were some softball games, baseball games. games covered. I don't want to speak and put it at a low number, but I'd say it'd be safe to say 15 to 20%. As opposed to this deal, you're looking at 100% of home games. So I mean, it's a considerable difference, but you're looking at two different options at the same time.
Thank you.
The thing I would add to that is the comment was made earlier that if we enter into the NFHS agreement, we will be disenfranchising our students. There are quite a few of our students who are currently disenfranchised when it comes to being covered through streaming, whether it be volleyball, soccer, the vast majority of our baseball and softball games. Our entire focus all along with Austin and myself has been to enfranchise all of our student athletes and to give all of them the ability to be seen in coverage through streaming. Because we have a lot of student athletes with a lot of success. Last year, we had soccer teams that won regional titles and went to state, not one of their games was streamed. We have players who would be able to get college opportunities if they had enough film to do it and we are looking at the benefits of enfranchising all of our student athletes, not just a select few.
And I would just like to add that the high school and Mr. Moore have graciously agreed to let us as middle schoolers come down and use the gymnasium for volleyball games, for girls' basketball games, for boys' basketball games when it's not in use. So the middle school that has gotten no exposure now is going to also get that exposure. We already share the football field, so we have access to that with our new facilities. We'll have access to baseball and softball. So not only are you including all of your high school athletics, you now have the opportunity to include middle school athletics in this deal, which has not been an offer before made to our middle school.
I would like to ask all of you, we've heard with, we know the football field and the basketball gymnasium and now middle school sports too, but what other students here in our school would benefit from these cameras? Is there clubs or anything that you would like to, that we can highlight with these cameras?
Commissioner Tackett spoke to this briefly, but one of the biggest draws to me and one of the things we actually asked in our negotiations with Mr. Wallingford was the possibility of how we could incorporate other students into this through a broadcasting program. Because I had the fortunate, I had the fortunate benefit when I was in high school to participate in broadcasting for my hometown radio station and both through football and girls' basketball. And being able to introduce broadcasting to our students is something that I am very much a fan of as a high school principal. But also, I would say, for our other students, not just athletes, but once the field is renovated and we're able to host marching band competitions, we have the ability to stream those events. If we want to even, there were even examples I saw in the NFHS network where pep rallies can be streamed or homecoming events can be streamed or graduations can be streamed. We have the ability to do a lot for our students with the ability to have the streaming power we would have. So I think that is a huge benefit to me as a high school principal, is the ability to not just impact student athletes, but other students as well.
I'm going to have to do it by voice because I have lost connection.
It's a, we're no longer doing the Google meet, guys. The only reason you're going to have the Google meet is if I need to display a thing. You don't have to unmute or do any, all the mics are live.
Okay, that'll work. My question is, what would other media be allowed to do for our games if we choose to stream through NFHS?
Depends on who you ask. My understanding of it, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but my understanding of it is essentially we stream these games over the NFHS network and nothing else changes except you don't have a competitive stream online. I know WBON has a local TV channel. In my opinion, if the school district wanted to allow it to be streamed on there, we've already mentioned radio rights, Mr. Tackett pretty well covered that. So other media, it's at the school district's discretion.
Thank you. I think you guys have covered a lot of what we've had questions and I know you all want, is there anything you, any of you all would like to add that we have not asked or covered?
Yeah, so as an old football coach, like a coach up here in the front, I was blessed and fortunate with football, you know, it's a, there's a lot of draw with football and I looked out for my kids and now stepping into this role, which I'm thankful to the board for allowing me, my kids have expanded. There's a lot of them. And if we go back to one of my first days on the job, one of the first acts that I completed as an athletic director, me and Ruth Hughes sat down and looked through a Title IX report. So since pretty much my first day, the word that's been stamped on the back of my head is equity. I didn't have to worry about that with football, but all of a sudden, when you start looking around at our other extracurricular activities, there's some concern there, okay? So when I first viewed the NFHS option, I considered it an opportunity for the rest of our student athletes to get this access. Some discussions that I've had even prior to this, some that disturbed me, for instance, you know, I had a discussion with the volleyball coach and we have some talented volleyball players. And the year's 2020, and this shouldn't be happening, but we have a talented college prospect and in order for her to get filmed to send off to college coaches, we're having to rely on rival coaches. That shouldn't happen. This would fix that. They mentioned our talented boys' and girls' soccer team. They deserve to be seen. Like I said, I didn't have to worry about that as much as a football coach. I could just focus on my kids, I support other programs, but now all these kids are kind of mine and I'm looking out for them, so I'm here tonight on their behalf.
Going along with what Austin just said, I think equity for me is again the key word. The first conversation that Austin and I had about this NFHS proposal, you know, I hope that my students know, that the community knows, that I'm out to, I'm here to look out for the interest of all of our students. You know, if you're a boys' basketball player or a football player, I'll be the first to admit, they've gotten a lot of coverage. But my job as a principal is not just to look out for the few, my job is to look out for all. And for me, it is important that we provide opportunities for all of our students to be showcased and that is one of the most attractive parts of this. You know, there's been, there's been some labels thrown around about disenfranchising students and I've already commented that this is going, this would allow us to stream all of our students. You know, the comment was made last Tuesday about us wanting to stream our lower level sports. That offended me. As somebody who played high school tennis, as somebody who did participate in a non-revenue sport in high school, I loved going to our students' volleyball, soccer games, cheering them on when we were at Frederick Douglass in the state tournament. There is nothing lower level about those student athletes. And our desire to stream all of their games so that they can all be showcased is something that I do want you all to please keep in mind, that that is the number one priority for both Austin and myself and Coach Hughes as well, who couldn't be here tonight. Thank you all.
The only thing I would like to add is with this pandemic hitting and our kids not being in the building, we are seeing that our number of student athletes that are participating has also dropped. If they have the ability to see this on this huge level, on this big screen here, then they're going to become more interested in our athletics. And if we start that at the middle school where they can be participants in that, you're only going to see that your high school programs also benefit and also grow from that. So, you know, it's no fault of anybody's that this pandemic has hit, but it has caused a lot of issues in our athletic programs and we need something that is going to boost those numbers back up, it's going to get kids actively involved. Research is going to show you that the more active they are in their schools, the longer they're going to stay in school, the more productive they're going to be in their building, in their community. So this is just one more effort to work at the mental health of our students and get them involved in our school programs.
I'm long-winded, two more things and I'll shut up. Speaking as a former coach and Mr. Sather can attest to this, used to, my whole life was filmed. We're looking 15, 20 hours on weekends sometimes. So as a coach, what this proposal could do is it's going to simplify that process for coaches as far as game filming, the upload, and if anybody's familiar with the sport of football, you know how important that is. But it also can carry over to practice. You can use these cameras to film your practices and I can tell you in the past, we purchased an iPad to use in football, but the problem is you have, you don't have a cameraman. Sometimes it's hard to get a parent out there. And I can't tell you the number of Friday nights we sent a hurt kid, a kid that was injured for the week, up there to film these games and I dealt with a lot of upset mommies because of the quality of the film, because sometimes the kid would push record whenever he was supposed to stop it and vice versa. So as a coach, you know, they're referred to as robot cameras, but in my opinion, if they're working properly, it takes a lot of user error out. So I'd like to say that. And then just the last thing, with the frenzy that this stirred up and a lot of the comments, I do want to mention, we had a meeting with Michael Watkins here the other day, tremendous to work with, extremely professional, and I think he does a tremendous job in what he's done building this and I want that to be said before, you know, any action's taken. Michael Watkins, WBON, we really cherish what they've done for us, I think they put on a great production, so I just want that to be said.
Thank you.
Can I comment on? So I just want to say, to what Mo just had to say, that's what was most appealing to us too, when this was proposed to us as an, is we've not been upset with Wallingford, we've actually really appreciated our, our time with Wallingford. And there's been several times, I work way out of town a lot and I've not been able to make it to the games, but I have watched every moment on my phone just because I'm awake. But what was so appealing is that, oh, this is about the kids and we want every kid to have the same opportunity and this is about every sport. I mean, have you seen volleyball on TV? No, but I would love to watch it. I've not got to make it to the game, but I'd love to see that. But this is for every kid, every sport, and that's what was so appealing to us and that's why we were wanting to dive deeper into this.
One other comment that I just wanted to make and I don't think this has really been addressed, is about the cost for our fans. And, you know, in today's world, everybody's worried about money and we get that, but for a year-long subscription, you can watch any sport as many times as you want and the fee will be $70 for the year. If you don't want to buy your subscription, you could also pay for the month and I think that's about $10 or $11 for the month and you would watch games for the entire month. So I don't know about you guys, but I drink $70 worth of Mountain Dew in a month. So, you know, the cost is a nominal fee and it may be that if we have a child or a family that really, really wanted a subscription, we are givers here in this community and I can't imagine that if somebody really, really wanted it, that we as a, as a community couldn't come together to help that family pay that yearly subscription. And so I just wanted to make sure that we threw the cost out there for everyone to know, so we're very transparent about all of that.
I had a couple of comments also. So, and I want to, just like Ginny and Joe, I want to thank WBON and Wallingford Broadcasting over the years for, for carrying our sports. You know, it was, my daughter went on to play college softball and to fulfill one of her dreams and it was one of the awesomest things to be able to look back on some of those things and her to be able to watch herself on camera. You know, everybody wants to see theirself on camera. I don't care if you're 48 or whatever, sometimes, maybe I don't, so. But on the other situation, as far as the NFSA, and I want to just touch, touch base on this, just like Donna was saying, so I kind of did a little cost analysis. So I have a family of four. If I were to go to the game, let's just say I went to a football game and I lied about Kaylee being a student, which she really is a student, just at college, so. She would pay $3, I would pay $3 for Kyla, there would be $5 for Tracy and myself. So that would be a cost of $16 for one game. If I also, or if I had to pay full price for them, for them both, it would be $20. Once again, it's $10.99 a month, so I've already doubled that by going to the game and I could stay in the luxury of my home and watch the game. Also, that same week, if I chose to go to a volleyball game and the same week I chose to go to a soccer game, so basically that would cost us, depending on what the cost was at the school or whatever the case was, it could be $48 to $60 for one week of sporting events and that's three games. So the point I want to make is if, if you were to go three games that week, that would basically cover your entire season package with, for that. I also wanted to speak on behalf of, you know, one of the highlights of my Friday night and as they would attest, usually if I listen to them on the radio, I'm texting William and Danny, harassing them every chance I can to see if I can just flub them up, but then they don't do that, they always just go with it and don't bat an eye. Well, within that, they've been doing that for a long, long time. So at this point in time, I would like to see us offer something, you know, we're getting ready to build an area technology center. So, and my wife mentioned the other night, you know, Brent Wayne Scott, a former student here, he went into broadcast journalism. What if we had all had something like this in place those years ago when he was in school? You know, had we, even without the area technology center, what kind of stepping stone would that have been for him to pursue, pursue that, that dream of being a journalist or a, or a PA addresser, whatever, what have you? I also want to touch base on Mr. Moore talking about the possible recruiting tool. You know, so many times, not only just our athletes, I want to include everybody, but especially our athletes that, you know, they don't get the exposure. You might, you know, back, and we talk about this all the time, my wife wouldn't want me to bring this up, but, you know, I remember we always save these old Lexington Herald Leader ads where somebody hit a base hit that, you know, that pulled in the win and run. Well, that's a rare thing to see in Estor County sports, being the Lexington Herald Leader. And I want to promote these kids as much as we can possibly do it and whatever, whatever route we go, that's what I want. They should, they, they, they go to school every day or online. Kyla would probably disagree with that, but we, they go to school every day, online all day, they go to practice, they, they, they do all the extras to be great at something. And I think we owe them that much to give them as much exposure as we can possibly give them. I know I ramble a little bit, I apologize, but...
So, okay, I think next on the agenda, we do have possible action item on this item, but I know, I think we have some people that may want to make a public comment, so at this time, I will move public comments up. So if anybody would like to speak at this time, feel free to do so.
Hello, my name's John O'Hare and I play soccer and I also run track. I'm going to keep this kind of short because I'm not the best public speaker, but, okay, I just wanted to say that I appreciate some of the kind words from all you guys and the support and wanting to get more exposure to all sports all around and I just wanted to say that I agree with that and I think it would be a good option to be able to have exposure to every sport equally. That's about it.
Thanks, John. Thank you.
My name is Peyton McGrath and I just want to say thank you all for this opportunity and I play volleyball, I'm a senior, and I just want to say that this program will be great exposure for us and that I'm in the process of trying to get recruited and with all this Corona going on, it's been kind of hard to get recruited and the recruiting process has been a little different this year and with this new program, I think it's just going to be a lot easier. And with this new program, I think it's just going to be a lot easier for all of us athletes, and even if it's not me that gets recruited, I think the athletes that are coming up is going to help them a lot. I just want to say thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you, Peyton.
My name is Mallory York, I'm on the volleyball team as well. I'm a junior, so if this does go through, I might get the possibility to, you know, check it out. There's a lot of talent, not only on volleyball, on soccer, I mean, we've got a lot of talent in our school. There's a lot of kids that work hard to be where they're at, and I just think we should all equally be broadcasted, because we all can get somewhere, so that's about it.
Thank you, Mallory.
My name is Mia Hale, and I'm on the girls' basketball team, and being a part of the girls' basketball team, there's not as much exposure as there is for, like, other sports and everything, so with this, it would help a lot with coaches being able to watch me this season, where we're going to have limited tickets and everything, and that would help a lot with getting scholarship offers and everything, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mia.
My name is Will Isfert, and I just want to say it's an honor to be here and be
able to talk for the basketball team and the class of 2021, and it's not only about us, it's about all of the classes. And I want to start out by asking, Mr. Wallingford, did you graduate high school route? Yes, sir. Okay. I want to say, us seniors, we've been through a lot this year, as a lot of you guys may know. We've had our ups and downs, we've had a lot of times where we feel like that we're not going to be able to live our senior year out together and just enjoy everything, and even our sports players. We have many sports players that, I mean, we're really worried about that we're not going to get to play our last year, and I just want to say that this whole situation coming about, how much stress do you think, how much more stress do you think is put on us kids? How do you think we feel? It makes us feel even worse knowing that we might not have our games broadcasted now, as we know that we might not play our senior year. And I just think that it's not just about basketball, it's about soccer, volleyball, baseball, all these sports that don't get filmed, and I feel like that every student should have the equal opportunity. And as people say, it's about us kids, it's about us kids, so if it's about us kids, why don't we come together as mature adults and make it about us kids to help us and better all of us kids? Because, I mean, I have an eighty-year-old grandfather that isn't able to get out, and I would love for him to be able to watch me on TV my senior year. So I feel like that this would be a good opportunity for not just basketball, but every sport to be equally and have it all fair for all of us to be able to, I mean, when I'm on TV, when I hear W B O N's coming to watch us play, I'm like, man, I got to show out tonight, I got to play hard, I mean, I got to show everybody what I can do. And so I feel like knowing that all of my games will be broadcasted where other people will see, that I feel like that I'll have something to strive for, I feel like I'll play hard every game, I want to show out for people. So I just thank you guys for all the support and everything, and I just pray for all of us in this room and pray that we get through this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Just on behalf of the athletes in general, I can't speak for everybody, I can speak for what I've been through personally. You know, I agree with a lot that's been said on both sides, there's a lot of ups and downs, but at the same time, I know that I went and trade, you know, the personal relationships that we've had with them for the world. I just think that it's a lot to lose with them, you know? If we could work something out where it's still as personal with the athletes, I'd appreciate it. I agree with streaming all sports across the board. I also agree with the personality, I guess, that we've had. Thank you all.
Thank you, Landon.
Don Richardson, you know, a few years ago, we, you as a board, put your faith in Mr. Saylor and hired him as our superintendent, and we're in the midst of doing some great things here in this school system, that you are charged with that responsibility. It's a heck of a responsibility, not only doing the building and construction and upgrades, but as well as doing what's the best for our kids, whatever the decisions are. Let's look through and dig into what your options are and get rid of all the other minutia that goes along with the negotiation parts of it. Who said what, who did this, who did that? Make good, sound business decisions, because that's what it is, it's a business. It's a business for Kelly, it's a business for us. Nothing personal, shouldn't be. Make good, sound business decisions that we elected you to do, and you hired that man right there to carry it out. So I'm excited about what's coming, the future, we want to move with it. I know Kelly, he wants to move with his too, but, you know, at this present juncture, we need to ensure that whatever decision we make, in our own minds, we made with the, charged with that responsibility of what's best for our kids, not what's best for the board member or the superintendent, but what we're all here for is what's best for our kids, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Good evening, my name's William Hardy, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and myself alone, no one else. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to come before you and speak to you, and I hope everybody knows that in November of this year, it'll be thirty years since Kelly gave myself the opportunity to do Estill County sports, and it's been something that I will always cherish. And what I've, but at the same time, I've sacrificed from my family, number one, my faith, even more important than that, and also my work, the run back and forth to every game that we possibly could do, and I enjoyed every single minute of it, because it showcased the kids of Estill County. That's why I've continued to do it, because it's these kids and opportunities for them that's most important. So we find ourselves here again with another opportunity, opportunity for our children. And I'll tell you what, I think about those kids, there's kids at Austin, I've never seen them without their football helmet on. I don't even know them, but I love them. That's why I did it, for them, they deserve it. All the kids deserve it. Their grandparents, their family far and wide deserved it, deserved to hear them, deserved to see them. That's what I'm committed to, that's what I'm in support of. When this thing started with this pandemic, it's been awful, we all know that, it's been unfortunate. All we can pray to our good Lord above that He'll watch over us and keep us safe, that's the most important thing. When they started into these negotiations, yeah, I had a lot of thoughts about it myself, but I'll tell you what, we can all win. We can all win for these children. It can coexist, it can coexist, we just heard it tonight. There could be a radio crew. We can stream everything, we can give kids the opportunity. And that brings me to another point. So I know a little bit about these kids. I've invested in these kids, I've invested in my time and I've invested in financially. And there's something else, I know a little bit about business too. Every single day for this county, I work to keep people employed, and four thousand people across this country, I work. And leadership is pretty tough sometimes. It's not the popular thing, but you have to do the right thing, you have to listen, you have to communicate, and you have to have a purpose. And I believe the board's purpose is the children of Estill County. I'd love to be a part of it, I'd love to be with you, sounds like we can. My time is coming to a close at doing the games, because it needs to be somebody else that needs to do them. But I'll tell you what, leadership, you got to have courage. And I think about courage, and if you hadn't seen it, when you leave here, look up there at the middle school, where you put a new roof on and got rid of the bucket brigade. Go up there and look at Estill Springs, look at the new bus garage, and you know what? Go next door and look at that area technology center. Yes, I was in Frankfurt, there was a couple of people in the room that were in Frankfurt that night. That day, there were people, Mr. Saylor's school districts lined up and down that hall and all day on that agenda to present, to get the grant for that area technology center. Mr. Saylor's leadership and the folks at central office and the business community went together to make that happen, to give opportunities to our children for what this county needs. This county needs that next door, opportunities that they'll never have before. We are the envy of all with that building next door. All the counties, all these big counties that were around us, we got it. And now, tonight, apparently you're going to talk about athletic facilities. For over thirty years, we pull in all the schools that we go to, and I look around and say, everybody else has got something better than we've got. Well, boys here in a year or two, they're going to pull in, they're going to say, I want to be like Estill County. Look what they've got. I just want to say, this can coexist. As a business person, it's incumbent upon businesses to figure it out. School systems have to figure it out, everyone has to figure it out. I was an engineer. I'm an Estill Canyon. I love my Lord and Savior, first of all, but I'll tell you what, I love being an Estill Canyon, and I will always be an engineer, and I appreciate what this board is doing to consider all these kids. We need band competitions, we need soccer, we need volleyball, we need every opportunity for these children, and I say, go engineers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Okay, before we take action on this, does anybody from the board have any other comments?
I have a couple things to say. Hi, everybody, I'm Summer Evans, I cannot explain to you all how excited I am to see a crowd and some familiar faces. It's not as fun sitting in that boardroom without anybody to look at, so I appreciate all of you all being here and taking your time and coming and talking to us and sharing your views, because that's part of it. I cannot tell you how many times I have been places, and everybody has things to say, but nobody shows up and says them, and it just shows how courageous you all are to come and show your points, and I have a few things to say. And my first one being, this is kind of an aspect that nobody's really touched upon, but it's a shocker to everybody to know that I'm not from here, I moved here from East Tennessee nine years ago, and I'm so blessed to be here, I love it here, wouldn't change it for the world. But with that being said, part of my heart is back in East Tennessee with my family, and I have been across the board of sports. I'm on the bass fishing team now, obviously that wouldn't be broadcasted, I played volleyball for a year, I was on the jump rope team for years and years, and I know all of these girls that play volleyball, I love watching them, and if I had this opportunity, I would definitely be watching them, especially Peyton, a fellow senior, I'm so excited for her, she's such a talented player, and I see Mallory just succeeding and going so far. Back in the day when I played volleyball, I cannot tell you how many times I talked to my grandparents, and, you know, there was no way for them to see me play, they're a state line over, and they're sitting at home, and even right now, you know, it wasn't possible for them to make it to a game, and especially right now with the virus and as crazy it is, we can't even cross over a state line without having to get tested, you know, it's a big situation right now, and we're all struggling with that, and I miss my family back home because of this, but just part of that, you know, I can't say I'm the only student that's here that doesn't have family elsewhere. Even if you've grown up here your entire life, you know, there's, I've talked to so many people who have family in Ohio or Tennessee or just everywhere, and I think it would be so awesome to be able to incorporate that. And I have watched W B O N, there's been so many times where I've had to work, and I'll be sitting there doing something and have my phone, you know, trying my best to stay up with all the sports, because I love watching them, and I hate that I couldn't be there sometimes, but just to know that I was connected, and connections are everything, regardless of if that's sports, if it's for job opportunity, and that's part of these students' futures, you know, is these connections that they're making through these sports. And just so awesome, I think we have such a great program, just middle school, and that's where it starts at. I mean, I started jump roping when I was in the third grade, third and fourth grade, and I was tickled to death to make that team, and I'll never forget the impact that that had on my life, and just sports, you know, individuals, I think we can all attest, so that's what makes us a better person, regardless of that sport is playing football, basketball, jump roping, even if that's down to, you know, your virtual video game teams, that's how you make connections, and that is your future. And I would not be sitting on this stage today talking to you all if it weren't for these connections and the people that I have come across. I have connections all over the state of Kentucky, and I'm not from here. It is such a blessing to be able to say that I'm not from this county, I can look around in this room and name every one of you all off, and be able to sit down and have conversation about people and relate to people around here, and that's all because of those connections. So that was one of the first points I wanted to make. And the second point is, I didn't even think until Mr. Moore brought up about, and Mr. Covey, about the memory thing, I'm a picture person, I'm a video person. If you know me, I constantly have my phone up, that's really the only thing I even use Snapchat, social media for, is the memories, I love taking video. I cannot tell you how many times I would get bored in a car ride and I'd start scrolling through my phone and looking back at pictures, and even, that's the biggest thing for my family back home too, you know, that's why I have Facebook, is so they can keep up with me and all the crazy things I do, I stay busy. But just the memories, and speaking of that, I was scrolling through Facebook earlier and saw a video from the Estill County Fair from nineteen forty-six, and watching that video, you all, it just, it brought so much joy to me, being able to watch that and just kind of see a little bit of how things are back then, and it was just beautiful to watch, really, it almost brought me to tears, it was awesome. And just as a memory person, I think it is so cool to have great quality video, you know, that was great for stuff back in the day, but just being able to have anything to watch is awesome. So that's about all I have to say, but just a big thank you all for being here, and I appreciate you all taking your time to come and watch all of us and hearing our points and my point of view, and giving me this opportunity, and a big thank you to all of you all, and just thank you all so much, and I hope everybody can make a good decision, you know, like Will said, as mature adults, as a business standpoint, business decisions are not easy, and we all know that, that boils back down to communication, and I think it's important to, you know, do what's best for the kids, make the right decision, and above anything, follow your heart, you know, do what, I think if you want to do something, you do everything in your power to do that, regardless of what anybody has to say about it, what they think about it. I just highly recommend everybody going back to their heart and thinking about what's best for students like myself. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Summer. Okay, at this time, Mr. Saylor, we will ask you to make a recommendation to the board.
Okay, I would like to say just a couple things, and I've sat back and I've just tried to listen. I appreciate the kind words that William just said, and, you know, a good leader, if you don't have good people following you, things don't get accomplished. And we look at the people that have sat on the Board of Education during my six years here, we've had overall good board members that care about our kids, we've not always agreed on everything, but we've always tried to work together to do what's best for kids. I've got fantastic staff at our central office. We've lost a lot of good people to retirement over the last few years, but, you know, we have other people that step up and they work their way into place and they start doing the right thing, and they work hard for our kids, and that's what it's all about. I know there's been some remarks made that doing things about kids, we don't make a decision that it's not the best for kids. And listen, do I claim that we've not made a few mistakes in the last six years? Well, if we weren't human, of course we'd made mistakes. Well, if we weren't human, of course, we've made mistakes. We've made several and we've owned them and we backed up and we've tried to fix them and do the right thing and do what's best for kids. And no, I'm, you know, I'll be the first to tell you, I'm not from Estill County, but I am an Eastern Kentucky boy. Thirty-six years ago, I began my career, and I've told this story several times, but I hadn't even taught the first day in the classroom and I end up in football camp at Felton or 4-H camp and there's sets, Belle County and Estill County, and we're living in the same cabins. Our coaches are in the same cabin. Don was there, Hoover Nice was there, Arthur was there. You can start naming off the coaches. Mike, former superintendent Powell County, lost his name right now. Yeah, Mike Tate was there. I mean, Bill, I can't remember Bill's name. We always used to laugh at Bill, you know? He'd, Miller, Bill Miller. Listen, we, we lived in a cabin together, guys, for five weeks, you know, Estill County, Belle County. And I never thought that 30 years into my career, I'd get the opportunity to come to Estill County. And I know there's people makes fun of me because I made a statement several years ago that this county adopted me and they can make fun of me all they want. I've cared about this county. I've worked my rear end off for this county and I've expect a lot out of our people. And I know that it's not always popular, it's not always the thing, it's not always what people wanted to do in the past. If you keep doing things the same way that you've always done, you're always going to get the results that you had. And if our people hadn't have worked the way they have, we wouldn't have the area technology center. We wouldn't have gotten $9.7 million of federal and state grants. Those things would not have happened. And I can tell you that I have never hid anything from the Board of Education, not one time. Not one time have I hid anything. And I forgive you for what you did the other night, Kelly, because the best thing you can do for this county is work with us and put these kids out there and we can still have a partnership together and it's totally on your shoulders. The only thing you would not get to do in this agreement is stream the games that you've been doing. And we can work together and I'll work with you because it's what's best for kids. I don't hold any grudge about anything. So I'm about these kids, I'm about what's best for kids, and no, I don't know every one of them by name. I'm like William. I go to the football game, I don't know who's under those helmets all of them. I'm not with them every day. But you know, I've got a high school principal that just got hired that almost knows all 700 of them by name. He just didn't come here by mistake. We, he sought us out and we sought him out. You know, and he's doing a good job. We've got all of our principals, we've got a middle school principal that's doing a good job. All of our principals are doing a good job. We're doing good things here in Estill County and we've got a group of people that want to tear us down.
We have an awesome athletic director too.
An awesome athletic director. You know, that ended up leaving us and we found an opportunity to bring him back. And he's doing a fantastic job. We've got everything in place, we need to be great, but we're fighting from within. We need to quit fighting from within. We ought to start pushing the train in the same direction. And that's all I'm asking. My recommendation tonight is that I think for the equity of our sports programs, I think we should pursue the NFHS network. I think we can write the things into the agreement that we want to. I believe Commissioner Tackett. I think he was honest with us. I think he is absolutely correct that we can work with them to get the things that we want to do and we want to keep our partnership with WBON. But if you decide to move on, Kelly, and you decide not to be a part of that, then we'll seek other avenues. But I'm asking the board tonight, and it is my recommendation, that you approve the NFHS contract after we've had time to meet with our attorney, Jonathan Shaw, who's on speed dial here tonight. And we will make sure that that contract does not preclude us from doing the things that we want to do for our kids. And the opportunities that this presents is endless, endless, as we move forward. So that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. Do I have a motion? Brian makes a motion. Do I have a second?
We always do that.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to say one last thing, Brian.
Yes, Brian.
And I just, just want to tell, talk to the people of Estill County and it's probably not even need to be said, if anybody knows my mind and my heart, to know that every decision we make as a board is for the betterment of the kids. We don't take it lightly. We try to take, I've listened to so many people throughout this week, I've reached out to people this week, so that I'm not making Brian Covey's decision, I'm making the decision on behalf of the majority of the county and those residents that I talk to. So just want to make sure that everybody understands, we do not take any of this lightly. Spending $9 million for, to benefit our school, all that stuff, we do not take it lightly. So I just felt like I needed to say that, so.
Thank you, Brian. Any other discussion?
I just had a comment that, you know, I like Brian, have been on the phone all week. I've gotten phone calls, emails, I've had people stop by my workplace. Anybody that knows me knows my heart and I don't take any of this lightly. I feel like I've done due diligence, I feel like that I've asked questions, I've investigated, I've talked to my constituents. I, like other people in the room, am an engineer for all of my life and I want to always put our kids first. And as it's been brought out earlier, this is strictly business. This is not personal, this is not an attack on anyone. And I hope that we can work with Mr. Wallingford and I think it can be a win for everyone. I think there's a lot of people that claim to be engineers, but they fell off the engineer train a long time ago. Mr. Saylor brought up a good point that we need to quit fighting from within. We need to quit fighting on Facebook. If you have a concern, reach out to your board members. Come to a school board meeting. This is about the kids. This is not an adult fight. This is about the kids. It's not personal, it's strictly business. And we want to do what's right for our schools, our kids, and this community. This community is never going to grow as long as we keep fighting from within. And this board here has stood strong and we have fought a lot of fights to get that area technology center, to get that new roof on the middle school, to get that bus garage moved. Kathy Samples is here in the audience and she will tell you. Rhonda Hardy and I come to visit her frequently when we have questions or concerns, we're worried about finances, money, business deals, what's best for the community. We reach out to people. We want you to reach out to us. We want to quit fighting from within. Mr. Saylor is our superintendent, but he does not make all the decisions. He will make a recommendation, but it's up to these five board members to make a decision and make the final vote. We want everyone to know that this is not personal and we hope that we can continue to work with WBON, with Michael Watkins, with Mr. Wallingford. We value what they bring to our county and to our school district and we hope that we can continue that relationship. As we move forward and look at this contract, we hope that we can include you in that contract and we can all work out a deal that everyone wins. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak and I appreciate, it's an honor for me to serve. I don't make any money serving, but it's an honor for me to represent you all, to represent our school, our district, and our county. And I do it because it's an honor. And I put God first in my life, my husband and my family, I've sacrificed them as well as the rest of this board has. But we want to do what's right and only what's right. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Now, I would add one more thing. Kathy Samples was with us in Frankfurt, wasn't she, William? When we went down there and we were able to convince the state of Kentucky to give us $5.7 million for this facility, so we've got a lot of people that's out here supporting this school district and we just all need to work together and I want to say that about Kathy. I know that.
Kevin Williams?
Kevin's back here as well.
He's here in the audience?
The former judge and had done a lot of work for us. There's a lot of people here, Don's here. I mean, I can start naming. We got Ross Tarnt back here with Peter. What a partner Ross Tarnt's been with this school district and you'll see the design plan they have here in a minute for our stadium upgrades and stuff. So I appreciate everybody. And listen, I do, and I was going to say there about Kathy, I know her and her husband, they were big Estill County fans and they wanted those chairback bleachers that's getting ready to go in that gymnasium down here. Every time I'd see them up at George and George's up there, you know, and Becky's, he'd tell me, "God, you got to get us some of those chairback seats over there in that gymnasium." Well, guess what? That's coming because we just done a $200,000 renovation to our central office. And when you get to go to that central office gym, when it opens back up, you're not going to know the place. I'm telling you, it is an absolute showplace when those bleachers finally go in. All of our elementary kids play down there and that's a great facility for this school district and it's because of the work of this board and the financial work that they've done that we've been able to do those things. So I'll hush right there, but I want to say that about Kathy. I appreciate her being here tonight.
We love Kathy.
Thank you. The other thing that I just wanted to say that if you're a board member or you hold a public office, it's not easy, you're beat up all the time, it's hard on your kids, it's hard on your family. My kids are constantly saying, "Mom, you're being blown up on Facebook." So we hear that all the time. You got to have big shoulders and you have to listen to a lot, but it's for the right reasons.
Mr. Wallingford?
Thank you. I just wanted the opportunity to quickly. Could you, okay. Just to respond to a couple of things, when we were talking about on the program, and I use the phrase lower level sports, we were talking about money and monetary things and the school system like we do, you make your money off football and basketball and then the other sports do not generate as much revenue. So I did not mean that in any way offensively, only that they, from a money perspective, and I apologize if that wasn't the best use of terms, no offense intended on that. Also, from my perspective, not knowing that it was predetermined, that that was not an actual call for a vote in that meeting, that it was predetermined that that was going to be taken out of the consent items, I did talk to that and I want to clarify that. And if that was misconstrued from the outside looking in, I'd like to apologize for that. But I want to ask one thing personally before I leave, that even though I said that we were troubled by incorrect information and felt helpless to get here to give correct answers, never in that procedure did I use the word untrustworthy or untruthful, rather. And there was a press release someone drafted last week from the board that used that term referring to my actions or this process. And I want to say that that is incorrect for the record and I just would appreciate the opportunity to let that be known. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion on the table.
She will have it.
I want to reiterate our state motto, united we stand, divided fall. And we're united for the best of our students. And that's our priority, is to do what's best for our students and their future. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries.
And I promise you all, not until Jonathan Shaw has reviewed that contract and made sure that the stipulations are in there that we won't, that we will sign any contract, even if it means that we do not get any time for basketball, we will not rush to judgment just for the sake of signing the contract. And I do think at some point in time that a committee does need to get back together and talk with WBON and Mr. Wallingford about how we want to move forward with local broadcast rights because, as I said earlier, almost all the things, 95% of the things that they've done in the past, they can still continue to do. The only thing they cannot do now is stream games live over Facebook. So I look forward to those conversations because together we can do what's good for the kids of Estill County and we can still be a good partner. So with that being said.
Thank you.
I would ask that you would table the next item as we are getting more and more information about the COVID testing for student athletes. We're already in a situation where we're going to have to cancel athletics again for another week. I've not looked at the metric this afternoon, but it's eight o'clock and I know this afternoon at four o'clock, we were still in the 50s. So based on guidelines from the Kentucky Department of Public Health and the local health department, guidance from them, we're going to have to cancel. We are going to try to look at what numbers are on Monday. If those numbers are starting down, and we think they will start down, starting Monday, we are going to allow our athletic teams possibly to go back into phase three, which means that they can meet in groups of 10, get them back in, get them in here so we can see them, let them start lifting and get some conditioning. Because if something happens, we can come back the following week. There's no way we can be competitive after being out for two solid weeks with no practice, no nothing. So student athletes right now, our fall athletes, I've asked, be patient with us. We're going to try our best to get you back in just as soon as we can, as soon as it's possibly safe. I don't want, I don't think it's wise for us right now to add a COVID testing procedure that is going to perhaps cause further issues. We've had enough controversy right now. We would like to look at possibly maybe a, something like they've done in some major conferences that before the season starts, before winter sports start, that maybe all athletes would test preseason, well before games start, just to make sure that we're sending the message that, hey, we've got to be safe. And I said this the other night, Summer's the one that said it the best of all of us. If we all work together to do what's best and start following CDC guidance and doing what we need to do, then we can get back into athletics, we can get back into school. And so I would ask that we table that and I guess that would mean that we move forward with Peter if you're ready.
Okay, I just want to quickly, I appreciate everyone that's here and I know you've been here over two hours. So if anybody wants to excuse themselves, please feel free to do so, but there is some great information coming up, you might not want to miss it. You're going to get to see, Mr. Peter back here is going to share with us our schematic designs from renovation number seven of the high school. So feel free, if you want to stay, we'd love to have you, but if not, we understand also.
And I know, board, you've got it right there on your laptop, but I'm going to walk right down here in front, Peter, I think they're going to put it up right there on the television screen if you want to see the improvements we're getting ready to approve tonight. I can't see it there and I'm going to go down. I won't get too close to Don, I'm going to take my mask.
Can you see it on the screen?
Yeah, those, the PDFs are different sizes, I'm sorry. They were scrolling through pretty nicely. Well, I want to thank everybody. I appreciate being able to be here again with you all last week, sort of walking through this schematic design, which is the first step after a board creates a BG1. We go to work and put together a schematic design to present to you guys. If you all like what you see, then we'll forward it on to the Kentucky Department of Education so that they can take a look at it and approve it. We'll be back in about five or six weeks to take a look at how the design develops. And then after another five or six weeks, we'll be back with everything fully complete, ready for you all to kind of take a look at, to see, to see how the design is going. So with this particular project, there are three principal components. There is the final building renovations that we have and upgrades. Yes? Um, you know what? That's, I think... Thank you, Jeremy. On the ear? There you go. Turn it on? Can I talk? Whoa. We're live. Okay. And Jeremy, you can see me, right? Because this first slide's a little strange because it's portrait instead of landscape. But nevertheless, there are three, there are three components to the project. Like I was saying, there's the final building upgrades, which I'll go through in just a second. And then we're real excited to be part of, you know, the renovations of the football field, which will become, you know, a real stadium for football, soccer and track. And then also some upgrades and renovations and new stuff going on up at baseball and softball. So those are the three big areas that we're sort of tackling with this particular project. And the first one are the renovations that are going on in the school. And a lot of them are things that go on above the ceiling and behind the walls, like integrating HVAC controls, which will be a real boost and help to the district with managing costs on things that cost a lot of money. Same thing can be said for upgrading to LED lighting throughout the facility, which would be really good. These are major systems that are getting upgraded in the high school and will pay off really well in a very short period of time. The gymnasium is gonna get air conditioning and new HVAC controls and upgraded electrical power systems, which is really good. Because it's the law, we will be addressing security issues now with a new secure vestibule entry, right? So people are safer here on site. Senate Bill 1 also addresses all of the doors to classrooms and public spaces in the high school. So we'll be looking at those, making sure they have the right kinds of locks and have the right kinds of coverings for the windows if they were ever to be needed. ADA upgrades, there are certain, there are just a few, it's not many, but there are some doors and access issues in this school that we'll be addressing to make sure that they're accessible. There is a little bit of plumbing system upgrades that we'll be doing in here as well, as well as some minor issues that we're taking care of. Or less, less major, I would say. They're all really pretty critically important. We have a couple of site improvements that we're doing. There's a retaining wall that needs some attention in the back. There's a sanitary line coming out of the school that really needs some help. Business classrooms downstairs need a safe way to get into and out of. And we're doing some flooring replacements as well. So there's a lot going on in, in the school building itself. This is phase seven of a seven phased renovation of this building. It is the last phase, which means we are also able to sort of turn our attention to athletic facilities. And I think if you want, maybe since you did this for me, you know, this slide, this is the upper floor of the high school. This is just showing some of the restrooms where we'll be doing some renovation. And then if you can scroll up... Can I, if I can scroll it, I'll do it. Okay. So this is sort of the entry vestibule that I'm talking about here with a new way for people to get into the building safely. There's gonna be a new first aid office coming in here with a new restroom. And the principal's area with a new conference room over in this area. Again, the three sort of represent restroom renovations. This is a new trainer room for athletics. The big, the big building is the gym and the work that we're doing in the gymnasium. And then on the lower, the lower level is where we kind of point out, if you can scroll up, Jeremy, just a little bit more, one more slide. Yeah, there you go. These are the business classrooms that I was talking about with a couple of doors to help egress out of those really well. This is the retaining wall in the back and then the sanitary line runs in front of the school along here that we'll be addressing. So that sort of gives you an idea of the floor plan of the school and the areas that we'll be working on in the school. So now if you scroll up to the next one, and the last two or three of these should all be the same size. We want this one up here. That's okay. There you go. Okay. So real quickly on the football and the soccer and the track, you know, this is the renovation of the existing football facility. It's gonna become an athletic stadium with LED lighting, which is exciting. Football will be a turf field. And soccer will be a turf field as well. The track and field's a new eight lane track. And the field events, there'll be some down here and then some are gonna be located up at, up on the hill a little bit of the ways. Grandstand seating that we're showing right now in this plan is for 2,000 people. There'll be VIP seating on the home side for up to 200, right along through here. There is gonna be a field house addition, which compromises three additional locker rooms, a training room and extra storage for the facility. The new entryway into the building is this entry plaza where we'll sell tickets and people can sort of have this this sort of promenade of sort of how they enter into the facility. Is gonna be a really nice, a really nice entry into the facility for anybody that comes to visit or anybody that's coming for the games. Should be really nice. And we're showing tailgate parking area here between some new tennis courts, which I'll talk about in just a second, and the venue that leads into, into the football and soccer and track complex. The tennis courts are all gonna be new, new tennis courts with bleacher seating for those. And we do have a couple of pieces of this particular project that we're looking at as alternates right now. One would be lighting for the tennis courts. And then the other is renovating the parking lots that are existing on the north, the side and behind the school. You can also see on this, on this particular drawing that the greenhouse isn't where it used to be. It has been, this is a new greenhouse that we're showing as also part of the project. So we'll be upgrading the greenhouse facility as well. So if you'll scroll up, I think I've got everything, touched on everything there. We'll scroll up for the, for... Yeah. Yeah, base, one more down, Jeremy, sorry.
Let me tell everyone also, this building does have some gas.
Ah, that's right.
And most of it was in the gym. And with the greenhouse and the old outdoor classroom, with them being removed, we're gonna be able to go to an all electric rate on this facility. And just in terms of electrical savings over the next 20 years, we're talking about in excess of somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000 to $300,000 the district will save in utility costs. Now that does not take into account that you're gonna have all new LED lighting and all new HVAC controls. So the district probably over the next 20 years will save somewhere close to a half a million dollars in utilities costs as well. So not only are you getting this new facility, you're also doing something that's gonna make a bang for the buck years down the road in terms of utility savings. And that half million dollars is gonna pay for school supplies and staff and buses and the things that we need to operate our school system. So it's really paying forward into the future.
Yep, thank you. The baseball softball facility, I think probably the biggest thing that I'd like to point out here, you're getting a lot of new buildings. There are press box and concession stands with restrooms in them. What you don't see and what's not mentioned on this slide is that we actually are carrying sanitary lines up to the facility, which is a really big deal. I think can make it a really nice addition to the venues. There are dugouts, new home dugouts with locker room spaces and visitor's side dugouts as well. And site work is, is not quite as extensive as it is down at the football field, but it, there is a lot of grading going on. We are working on ADA accessibility for people who come up to the venue. And we are gonna be providing new backstop systems for each of the fields, which will be really nice, a nice new addition. Access road up is gonna be improved. There is some new parking that we're showing, both behind the baseball field here and in between the two, the two venues. And then we have also shown some possible alternates for the project with some additional parking lots up here. And there's a parking lot down here at the softball field that's an alternate. One up here for 33 spaces and then one behind baseball, which would provide even 68 more. Seeing on how, how things will, will come in at the bid and possibly get a lot more parking up on the hill, which would be really nice. The other alternate that I note in this project is, is new scoreboards for the venues. And that's gonna be something that we'll look to get into the project as well. So I think that that covers all of the sort of, you know, the scope of the project and what we're putting in, in the project. I might ask if anybody has any questions or wants to, need to address anything else. Yes? That's exactly right. We're widening the road so that it'll be two 11-foot lanes, I think, is the way that it's gonna be. So it's widening to 22 feet and it comes here past sort of an access gate and runs the base bid, it runs all the way up here. And then it encompasses this parking lot and it runs down to the concession stand building at the softball field. Right? So it's all of this, all of this and then down here. And then alternate one parking would be this parking lot back here. Alternate two would take the road and the sidewalks around to this point and encompass all of this lot. And then alternate three would be everything back this way. Yes?
Well, and just for clarity's sake, alternate one is probably something that we're gonna be able to do, but we wanted to break them out in price because we don't know what's gonna happen construction wise between now and then.
Right.
So if you break them out, you're still getting the same bid price that you would get if they were included in the project because they have to bid it or price it based on year prices for the entire project. But because we know that as a board, we had about $11 million total and that was a little bit conservative, we probably got about $11,500. So this was coming in a little bit high, higher than what we thought. So we thought, and that's based on, like I said, you go to bid in February, last time, we saw what happened with the area technology center, it being a construction active project. We got several fantastic bids.
Yes.
You were able to take every option, if you remember. So it could very well happen here. Alternate one and two, we really want to do. Alternate three in center field may be a little bit of a push money wise. And so everybody will know, last thing, we really explored making this one-way traffic, that we would've went off the back and come down by the middle school
Yes.
on the existing road that goes up behind. But after running some numbers, that cost estimate was approaching a half a million dollars. And we just did not have the money that would allow us to do that. That doesn't mean that sometime in the future, if there was something changes in terms of bonding or something like that and the district wanted to cut the road later on, you could very well do it. But it's not maybe something we can do right now. So that's sort of the thought process there as we sort of put this together the last few days.
So Mr. Taylor, is the middle school parking lot included in this or in the ATC?
It's included in the ATC.
Yes.
We should have pricing on that. Michael was close last week, but now they've turned everything to get this ready for us tonight.
I just was curious in which phase it was gonna be.
It will be, it will be coming up as part of the ATC renovations we are. And I, I don't want to speak out of turn, Jeremy's not here and Peter's here, he's our architect, but we're at a point now with the ATC that we're probably not gonna see a major change order because we're, we're above ground. We're going up. And usually the problems exist below ground. So we're probably not gonna see major things in that. We'll use the contingency to clean up all that park. And that's the plan as of right now. In any contingency that's left, my understanding is we can roll into this project.
I believe it stays with your, yeah, your capital projects, but yes. Yes? Right. Right, so the gymnasium is currently not air conditioned, right? So it is, it's not air conditioned. So this will be a really nice addition to the gym. Those are spaces, as anybody who's ever been to a graduation ceremony or something like that that's being held in a gym will tell you, it can get pretty bad. And air conditioning can really make it a really nice space, as well as just new HVAC equipment that will really improve the air quality of the space, which is, is pretty much what we're doing. Now, the bleacher project, which is a little bit different, there are some VIP seating that's coming to the gym on the floor of the gym and a bank of bleachers are gonna be be moving, moving over to the board office. And there'll be some bleachers, new bleachers coming in that'll be really nice down on the floor of the gym. Is that, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Absolutely, yeah. Gym's gonna be a different kind of place. Any other questions? Okay.
Guys, if you'll look, there's an attachment. I'll wait for Ms. Esper to get back.
Did you have something you wanted to say, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
We've always had the reputation for having the coolest system in the region, for the movement in the 10 region, the region we're in now. I hope those areas are great. We have the right to eat, rock, here, learn, here, plus them, like I say, are sacrificed. But it'd be nice to go understand all the same. Uh, but that's just, that's just kind of a comment. I appreciate what you'll do.
Peter, is the PA systems part of the new press box with the PA system and the two, uh, the football, uh, softball and baseball? And if it's not, that definitely does need to be included?
That sounds, that sounds good. Yes, we'll, we'll make sure, I'll, I'll double check and make sure that it's in there.
We do need to have CMTA also look at, I think that was a new, uh, PA system that was put in that gymnasium at one time.
It was, yeah.
And it may just need to be, uh, there may just need to be some tweaking done to it, or there may be just a few issues. One of the things that we've gotten so much better at is making sure that we've got maintenance contracts and maintaining systems and that may be something that's sort of slipped off the, uh, tabletop, I guess, and just not, uh, being looked at, but, uh, the system in there, I think was new. But we do need to make sure that the PA systems are appropriate for that. Peter, one other thing, we have alternate three that would include that parking lot that's in center field, which we really think that, you know, that's, it, it may not even be something that's all that necessary down the road, but could we also just have, Michael's already done some preliminary work, if it pleased the board, we could have an alternate four on the high school, baseball, softball project. And alternate four would just be that you would extend the road and make it into a one-way road. And we could see at that point in time, there would be maybe a little bit of savings, not much because it's already there. The road going up the hill would not have to be widened, uh, as much, but I do know that that cut back there is pretty severe. Michael and I spent last Saturday talking about that. I know that he had priced it somewhere in the neighborhood of a half million dollars.
He did, yes.
But if we can just go ahead and have an alternate four, we don't know what's gonna happen on bid day.
Right.
Especially with Codell already here, you've got contractors, it's already on site. Uh, they may like it here. They may not wanna move on. So they may be, they may be pretty aggressive on bid day in all honesty. If they're pretty aggressive on bid day, then we may be able to stretch our dollars a lot further because of the fact that they're already here. So I think it would address at least the issue that Kevin has that we've got an alternate there. If it's out of sight, we can't do it. We know we can't do it, but at least we made the effort. And I don't think it would cost that much more in design to just go ahead and do that. Would you think?
No, that's fine. I think, uh, Michael's done the legwork and started it already, so we can add that to the list.
Any other things you all can think of with those two projects? Or what's really three projects? Building, stadium, and, uh, the baseball softball? We came in today, uh, on base bid. Peter, do you care to go over that, the cost opinion?
No, I, I don't. I, I have a partial breakdown in my hand. I have a partial breakdown in my hand. I think I did include it, um, with what I sent you.
Yeah, let me.
But I can, uh, I can let you know that the, the final building upgrades, that first portion that I was talking about, when we took a look at our cost opinion, the final building upgrades came in at $2,335,000 project cost. The football, soccer and track facility, um, with the new field house and everything that I was talking to you all about there, came in at, uh, $6.39 million project cost. And the baseball softball upgrades came in at $2.245 million project cost. The total project cost, uh, opinion, I should, I should state, it's an opinion, it's a preliminary opinion, cause we've got a lot of design still to do, came in at 10.97 million dollars. So, and I did give a much more extensive breakdown, sort of item by item in the scope I sent to Mr. Saylor earlier, uh, today, uh, once we worked that out. So, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you all on that.
And let me add to that, just realize out of that 10.9, there was some things added from that preliminary cost opinion in July. That was before we decided to get that greenhouse and everything out of there to
Yes.
make a nice tennis facility, to be able to have that for our students. We had to move the tailgating area. That's been a tradition for 30 years probably, ever since Hoover Neese Field's been there. We, we didn't wanna take tailgating away, but it couldn't stay where it was at because it was gonna be blocked by the new stadium seating. So there was, uh, some things that was added. Just remember that we're gonna have a $600,000 cash commitment because we cannot bond a field turf. You're, you're not allowed to bond it. It, it has an eight to 10-year life is what they say that it has. Uh, if it's well taken care of, it will last longer than that. But because of the fact that this is a 20-year bond, they will not let you bond something that you can't have a guarantee on for the entire 20 years. That's why when we did our roofs, we had to change the roof design because one roof we looked at, it was a 15-year, uh, guarantee. So we couldn't do it. We had to upgrade to get the 20-year guarantee because you couldn't bond it. So we got about a 600, little, give or take a few thousand on a commitment there. And also know that House Bill 392, I think it was, that went along with Senate Bill One, provided additional funding to school districts for secure entries, for new lock systems, for all that. Uh, safety upgrades that Peter talked about, we're probably eligible for about another $150,000 of funding outside of this project. And Peter and them will get an exact number on that and we'll apply directly for that funding. Uh, while doing it, we also are able to get some money back at Estle Springs in the middle school for work that's been done there. So, uh, you're looking at, right at a $10 million project. So it is up about $600,000 from that original BG1. And we'll just sort of move forward and if we can take alternates, we'll take them. If we can't, we're better off than we were before. So, uh, we're that much further, uh, down the pike with it. So, um, I think people's gonna be happy with it, uh, regardless. And I, I, I hope they are. And I, I tell you, this is our last big commitment. These ladies that put their heads on the line, uh, for that recallable nickel. And I know we got two board members that wasn't here for that. But I, I've watched them sit right here for the time they've been on the board and I've not seen one of them yet make a vote that wasn't for the best interest of kids. So I, I think they would've been right there with us fighting and clawing for the best interests of our kids. So I'm telling you guys, it's with a, uh, great pride and joy. I made the recommendation, we approved this schematic design. Get it sent to Frankfurt and let's get this baby rolling. We'd like to start construction about March 1.
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to get this baby rolling.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Last thing I wanna share with you, we had a question during the tax hearing the other night about the tax rates of surrounding school districts. I put that document together, you can see it there. And I think I even sent it to you all.
Yes.
Uh, and I also sent it to, uh, one of the ladies that was at the meeting that had asked that information. And just for the public to know tonight, out of all the 14th region schools and the surrounding school districts uh, around us, Madison, Clark, Montgomery and all those, we have the third lowest tax rate in this part of the state. So, uh, our board has done a lot with less, uh, and that says a lot, uh, for our school district. So, uh, that's available and I will post that on social media tomorrow sometime. So, so everybody else can see it. So, uh, I do know that they misprinted the tax bills. I hope I'm not telling something on them. They had actually put us at 51.5 and I had said, uh-uh, 51.1, we had to back it out. And, uh, so they're correcting that. Jeff and Brian, they, they've done a fantastic job. And just a little bit of commis, uh, miscommunication, but tax bills will be out on time. So everybody know, they'll, they'll have them ready. They reprinted them today. And I really appreciate them working with us on that. Tell you what, we've got good partnerships with local government and our community and, um, we've got this thing moving in the right direction for our kids and that's what it's all about. And I appreciate you guys, appreciate you Summer. It's been a good board meeting and I know it's been long, but it's been, I think worthwhile, so.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. I need a motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion adjourn.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you guys.
We need to end the meeting?